Good evening, everyone. I'm Nancy Moore and I'm a board of directors, member of the Bankers Hill Community Group. We welcome you to our February meeting of the Bankers Hill Community Group and thank you all for attending. We appreciate it on the damp evening coming out. We'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for moderating this evening's forum and a special thanks to Jane Andrews. I don't see where she is right now, but she's in the back from the League of Women Voters for coordinating the event. Tonight's moderator. Okay, that's the first and the last time you get to applaud tonight until the end. I'd also like to thank tonight's moderator, Dana Freehoff. Our question screeners down front, Stephanie Sontag, Rochelle, Rocky Hirschfeld, and all from the League and from the Bankers Hill Community Group, board member Anne Kilreen. Our timekeeper is Karen Lee Robinson and the pages are Mary Santo, Mackenzie Kirwin, and Elizabeth Cobb. We had several questions submitted in advance. We've given those to the screeners down here. We will have pages and a couple of folks from the Bankers Hill Community Group that will be roving around the auditorium tonight to provide you with index cards and pencils if you have questions. So just raise your hand and somebody will get to you with an index card and pencil. And we'd like to also thank, most importantly, our candidates that are here tonight, Kate Callen, Colleen Cusack, Ellis California Jones, and Stephen Whitburn. Thank you all for coming. We really appreciate you taking time to be here. Tonight, we're dispensing with our regular agenda, but we do want to remind you that our steering committee meets generally on the Thursday after each meeting. For those of you who aren't real familiar with our group, we meet on the third Monday of every month except for August and December, and so we are open to the public. We welcome everyone's attendance and we encourage you to come back to another meeting in the future. Thank you again for attending tonight and please remember to vote on March 5th. Thank you.
All right. Good evening and welcome. Thank you all so much for coming. Again, my name is Dana Freehoff. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters and again, I will be your moderator for this evening's candidate forum and this is for San Diego City Council, District 3. I do want to start by thi-- oh, you can't hear? There, is that better? Oh, thank you so much. Okay. I want to start by thanking the host again, the Bankers Hill Community Group. The League welcomes opportunities to work with local organizations to try to put these candidate forums on, so we really, really appreciate the community group here and partnering with them. And again, we would like to thank the candidates, as Nancy has already done, but most importantly, again, we want to thank you for all coming and becoming informed voters. So again, thank you very much for coming out. So the League is proud to be a nonpartisan, to be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing candidates on political issues, but always working on vital issues of concern to members and the public. It's also important for you to know that I do not live in the city, San Diego, so I am definitely impartial in regards to this election. So as part of our mission to educate voters, the League moderates candidate forums using a format that is fair and informative. The candidates have all agreed to this format in advance. And at this forum, you will have an opportunity to ask questions that has been mentioned and in, to ask the questions you care about and to, and a chance for the candidates to explain their position. So this is, it is a forum with the voters, not a debate between the candidates or a debate between the candidates and the audience. I'd like to now just review again, a reminder, Nancy kind of reviewed it already, but I'll review the evening's format. Candidates will each have two minutes for their opening statement, two minutes for their closing, and one minute to respond to each question from the audience. The order of the candidates has been randomly selected. And again, our timekeeper, Karen Lee, why don't you show the paddles? Everyone's got to see the paddles. She's official, so she'll be keeping track of the time. And as mentioned, the most important part of the forum is hearing from you and the questions you may have for the audience. As a reminder, there will be no verbal questions from the audience. So we, again, we have our volunteers out with their three-by-five cards, so if you have some questions, flag them down and they can give you that three-by-five card. And then again, the questions will be screened with, by Rocky, Stephanie, and Anne. And as far as writing your questions, just a couple of recommendations. Word your questions kind of in a general way so that all the candidates can respond to them. Please remember to use civility and respect in wording your questions. Keep your questions succinct. If you put a big commentary, prof-- excuse me, prefacing the question, it will not be read. And correction, questions directed specifically to one candidate will be held until there are specific questions for all the candidates. As mentioned, the question screeners are then going to organize the questions into categories of similar nature to avoid repetition and assure the topics of greatest interest are being asked within the time available. And then questions that are inappropriate for the San Diego City Council will be set aside. And now, this is important also, you need to please hold all applause until the forum is finished to ensure that all the candidates have equal time and to keep the candidate forum moving, because I know we're going to have a lot of questions. And then one final item, since the candidate forum is designed to provide a nonpartisan setting for undecided voters to hear all positions, any demonstration of support or opposition, such as clapping or booing, to the candidates or their positions will be out of order. And any unheeded warnings may result in cancellation of the forum. This again, is to provide opportunity for all the candidates to fairly state their positions. So now, we're going to start with our opening statements. And again, they drew numbers as far as who went first, second, third, fourth, and we're going to start with candidate Kalen.
I'm going to open by answering a question, the first question that every candidate gets, which is, why are you running? I am running because I feel passionately about safeguarding local democracy. I've spent years working to do that at the community level. I served on the North Park Planning Committee. I co-founded the Sono Neighborhood Alliance and I have published a series of news commentaries about community issues. When San Diego moved to a strong mayor form of government, local democracy became erased and what we have now is autocracy. Strong mayors make decisions unilaterally that benefit their special friends and have hurt the neighborhoods of District 3. We're going to talk about that tonight. A compliant city council has rubber stamped those decisions. And when we pushed back, as we do here in District 3, and we said, no, that's not working for us, no, we were treated dismissively and scornfully. We heard things like, you just don't understand, you just don't get it, we know best, trust us. Or we heard, well, you're just going to have to learn to live with it, that's, that's the way it is. Four years ago, a candidate for this seat was interviewed by the Union Tribune and was asked about the 30th Street bike lanes. The answer was spot on. The answer was, they were supposed to be on Utah Street, we haven't heard a good reason why they're not, we don't know why they've been moved to 30th, the businesses on 30th have a right to be concerned. And the answer ended with this exact quote, "At the end of the day, a lot of residents want to be respected, they want to be heard, and I think we owe that to them." My question to the people of District 3 is this, over the past four years, do you think you've been more respected? Have you been heard more closely? Have your views mattered more? If your answer is no, then you need to vote for deep systemic change and that's why I'm running.
All right. Thank you. Now, we'll go to candidate Cusack.
Can everybody hear me? I wear many hats. Right now, I am an attorney. I've been an attorney for 30 years. I, the last eight years of which, I've been helping homeless individuals pro bono. It's not a great business model and had to figure out how I would support myself, so I took on a second job as a K-12 substitute teacher. I get into the classroom now half of the month and the courtroom the other half. And I believe, I've been living in District 3 now for 25 years, in the same place for 25 years. I came out here to go to law school 34 years ago and I never left. This is my home and I have seen a lot of different San Diegos over the years. I have that perspective. I am boots on the ground, on the street, watching what's happening to homeless individuals and I know as a city that we can do a lot better than we're doing for people. People are hurting and people need help and police aren't out there passing around housing that doesn't exist. So we need to meet people where they're at, their needs. I'm very in touch with what needs to be done. I've been very critical of this administration for the last four years. I invited the United Nations Special Rapporteur in Adequate Housing here to San Diego to inspect conditions. I did this in 2019, long before I ever had any ideas I would be running for office. And then again, this past January, and they found human rights violations occurring here in what we're calling a city sanctioned camp. So we're going to talk about a lot of that tonight. I'm the best person positioned to address head-on this housing and homelessness crisis. Thank you.
All right. Actually, now, we're going to go to candidate Whitburn.
Thank you all. Good evening, everybody. It is great to see everyone here tonight. We've got a full house, so thank you all for coming tonight. I do want to thank the Bankers Hill Community Group for hosting this forum tonight, the League of Women Voters for conducting it, and most of all, each of you for giving up part of your President's Day evening to be here for tonight's forum. It has been an honor to serve you and Bankers Hill on the San Diego City Council for the last three years or so. I have really appreciated the relationship that my office and I have had with the Bankers Hill Community Group. That started over a decade ago when I was the Executive Director of San Diego LGBT Pride and we worked together to coordinate the post-pride cleanup every year and that tradition has continued during the time that I have served on the city council. It's been a pleasure to work together on many other things as well. One of the real beauties of Bankers Hill is the open space that we have here in the neighborhood with Maple Canyon. We've been working to make improvements in Maple Canyon, Balboa Park. We worked together to address some of the homelessness issues that folks were experiencing along Sixth Avenue on the West Mesa. We're going to be opening Olive Street Park later this year, really looking forward to that. And we've worked on many other issues together as well. I've led the city council in addressing the homelessness crisis with a couple of key initiatives. I got some regulations passed that got scooters off the sidewalk, which was a big problem for a long time. We have addressed the fact that there were so many vendors in Balboa Park and much more. I am honored to be endorsed in this race by the Democratic Party, by our city firefighters and police officers, the Labor Council, the LGBTQ Victory Fund, many elected officials who represent this area, but most of all, I ask for your support because I really look forward to working together in a second term to continue to make Bankers Hill the neighborhood that we all know it can be. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Candidate Jones.
Good evening, everyone. I guess before I start, I want to thank you guys for coming out and, you know, listening and paying attention to what's going on in your local politics. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yep.
So, one of the first things I would like to address is we have upcoming rains that's coming up in San Diego and I know you guys seen the flood disaster that's been going on, so I just want you guys to kind of keep that in mind. We're going to have some volunteer things going on this weekend. You can obviously Google it and see where you can help, if you can. I know a lot of people work like I do. The reason that I'm running and I'm going to play this, I've been, you might have seen it on my social media, but I guess since Mr. Whitburn is here, we're going to play this. Hopefully, it pops up. But this is one of the reasons. Yeah, that was the drilling they were doing late at night, around 1:00, 2:00 o'clock in the morning for months. And that's what spurred me to actually running in this election. I represent the regular person who just is fed up with what was going on in city council. They were doing construction outside of my apartment on 4th and Broadway and I just had it and my girlfriend spurred me to action, because I'm from city heights, so I'm used to helicopters and planes and people doing drugs in front of me and everything like that. I'm used to that, but my girlfriend wasn't and it kind of opened my eyes, like, there's probably a lot of people in San Diego who's not, you know, used to that type of stuff, you know? Homeless people out smoking in front of tourists and I feel that there's a little bit of a double standard going on. You'll get a ticket in your house within, you know, very fast, but then let them build an eight-story apartment next door you don't even know about it, right? So, those are one of the issues. I just represent one of the regular San Diegans who was fed up and I had to jump a lot of hoops just to get in this position, but the main thing that I represent is that I am going to be responsive to you. I was out in the community today. I'm always out in the field. I come from a field management position where we're able to gauge the feedback of the clients and people who are spread out in a large area and I'll be able to relay that to the city council on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are now going to go to the questions that we received from the audience. And again, I have sort of a random order in regards to responses to the questions, so I'll call on the candidates. The first question is, in light of ongoing and planned increased building in Uptown and a very large increase in population, how will the need for significant infrastructure, such as roads, be funded? And we will start with candidate Jones.
I believe that this question may be alluding to the bond tax that's on the ballot, which they will be looking, the city will be looking for an increase in your tax in order to pay for some of the infrastructure that they have frankly been overlooking the past couple of years. I think that that is not necessary right now because we make a lot of money. I think San Diego grossed the most amount of tourist revenue, like, ever, last year. And so, the big problem is the mismanagement of the funds and one of the major reasons I think that is, is because the city hasn't been communicating with its residents. So when it comes to housing, of course, we do need density, especially in this area, but I think it has to be done reasonable, but overall, it has to be done with the city's consent. That's the thing. They're spending your money, they're spending all of our money. We need to know exactly what's going on and we have the technological, like, infrastructure to get the word out. I just think the city has been a little bit quiet about it because they don't want you to know what's going on behind closed doors. And I want to upend that system and get the word out as fast as possible to the residents when they're building something.
All right. Thank you. As a reminder, the candidates have one minute for response on these questions. And again, the question relates to the need for significant infrastructure and how it will be funded. And we'll go to candidate Colin, Kalen, sorry.
District 3 got more than, almost two-thirds of the 2023 housing permits, one district, nearly two-thirds. We didn't get two-thirds of the infrastructure funds and in fact, some of those infrastructure funds made their way into the 101 Ash settlement. We cannot ask the voters to do any kind of new tax increase, bond measure, what have you, trash fees, until City Hall gets its financial house in order, because they will not go for it. So when I'm elected to the city council, the first thing I do is I look at all the expenditures and I find the stuff that's not giving us any kind of return on investment. I'd like to talk about that more later. And I go through the revenue streams and I find those revenues that are not being collected. We have to do it on both sides of the budget and we have to do it seriously. And then and only then can we go to the voters and ask them to approve more money.
All right. Thank you. And then candidate Cusack.
So it's axiomatic if you're bringing in new residences and you're increasing the density of people that you would also improve the infrastructure to support that increase in density. That just makes sense. How we go about funding it, there's a variety of sources. We don't have to immediately jump to taxing. We can do assessments, building assessments on the new development. We have, we can address the vacant units and have them contribute to this. I believe that the public safety budget could, would support infrastructure changes that would make the city a safer place to live. So there's a variety of sources and we're correct, we diverted $233 million from our infrastructure piggy bank to fund Ash Street and that's just unconscionable.
All right. And candidate Whitburn.
Well, thank you for the question. It's one of the biggest issues that the city is going to have to grapple with. We have billions of dollars in infrastructure needs that we need to address citywide and that billions of dollars backlog has accumulated over decades and that's why we're in this situation. We do not have currently enough revenues to cover the billions of dollars in infrastructure needs that need to be addressed. We're not going to be able to address it with little cuts here and little cuts there. We're going to have to make a real decision about how we're going to address it and we're going to have to make that decision as a community. It's, excuse me, it's largely up to you how you want to address that. There have been conversations about increasing the sales tax to the level of the surrounding communities. Ours is lower than the surrounding communities. There have been talk of an infrastructure bond measure, but all of those require voter approval. So you may hear folks putting those forward and putting it on the ballot and that'll be up to you if you want to fund those kinds of improvements.
All right. Thank you. The next question from the audience is, if it proves financially feasible, will you vote to create a not, non-for-profit or not-for-profit public utility to replace SDG&E? And we will start with candidate Whitburn.
I am very interested in the possibilities of municipalizing the, San Diego's power. You know, currently, we have a monopoly with San Diego Gas and Electric. It is a unionized workforce. They treat their workers very well and there are some folks in the labor movement who are opposed to any kind of municipalization, but by and large, I think that our city is served well when we have municipalized services. Now, the big question there is if it is financially feasible. It would take billions of dollars in upfront startup costs in order to take over San Diego Gas and Electric's grid. I don't know that that's going to be feasible, but there are feasibility studies underway. I supported the contracting of those studies and I'm very interested in seeing what the consultants bring back, because it is definitely something that we should consider and explore.
All right. Candidate Jones.
Yes, I am in favor of if it's, you know, feasible, right, financially feasible, for us to have some type of municipal grid, municipal utility service here in San Diego, like community power that you've probably seen in this audience or a couple other. They've been doing a lot of campaign lately, but yes, I think we should have some type of competition in that area, especially as you, I don't know if you guys have seen in the Union Tribune today, they say we're not number one, we're like number three in the highest utility rates in the country. So that's something we definitely need to look at. Regarding the last question, it was asked in a way to where it could be unclear, but no, I am not for any increase of taxes. I think right now, it's just, it's impractical to ask San Diegans for an increase in their sales tax and I think that the candidates should be a little bit more forthcoming with exactly how they feel about those taxes. So no, no on any tax increase for the next four years or beyond.
All right. Candidate Kalen, SDG&E question.
In theory, the idea of a nonprofit utility sounds very good. We need to look into it and we need to make it clear to SDG&E that no one is happy with them. We need to replace SDG&E, but let's not go from the frying pan to the fire. I'd like to say something about unions, about labor unions. I grew up in a union family. My dad was a Teamster, my uncle was in the plumbers' union, my cousins as well. So, union loyalty is deep rooted in me, but I don't think labor unions should be dictating government policy. I don't think they should be calling the shots at City Hall. It's time for the people who are being served by City Hall to have their voices heard and listened to and I don't think that that's happening. So I know the labor unions are powerful, I get that, but they are not in charge of City Hall.
All right. Go ahead.
I'm a hell yes. We can't do much worse than we're doing right now in terms of feasibility. The feasibility of continuing on paying these high prices is just, that's your feasibility study, we just can't keep going on. There's a lot of other cities who have gone the municipal route. This is not something that we need to set up a commission and study ad nauseam. This is, this is ready to move forward with voter support. In terms of the union issue, that's a red herring, the same, they're going to use union workers, it's not going to be non-union. There'll be a oversight panel for 10 years with representatives from each city district represented to help keep that in check. It'll operate as a city agency, but separate from city governance. Hell yes.
All right. Remember, no applause, no cheering, no booing. Okay, so the next question, and we will start with candidate Cusack. It is regarding police funding. And do you think we need more police funding?
Hell no. I, I believe that there's a lot of opportunities in the police budget to support other, other things that are happening in San Diego, including infrastructure. So we have something known as environmental crime design, that's designing our streets and roads to make them more walkable and less easy for people to race up and down them, for getaway drivers to get away, things like that. So we can, we can use this budget in different ways that hasn't been done before in order to strengthen our communities. And the 70, the $28 million that's being paid to 73.15 officers to do nothing else than chase homeless people around, we can do a lot better with that money as well.
All right. Candidate Whitman, police funding. Whitburn, I'm so sorry.
Well, I think we gauge an answer to that question by the degree to which we feel confident in public safety in our neighborhoods and whether people feel safe in our neighborhoods. Right now, I could tell you there's a lot of frustration that when folks call for a police officer for a non-emergency issue, it can take a terribly long time to get a police response, if at all. People do get a quick response for an emergency, but for a non-emergency, it can take too long. The answer to that, though, is not to increase the budget right now. We actually have funding for the number of officers we need, but we need to recruit more officers into our police force because we have a staffing level that is below our budgeted threshold and that is causing us to be slower in our responses. The good news is we're turning a corner on that. We are finally starting to attract officers from the Sheriff's Department and other agencies to come to San Diego, so we're moving in the right direction.
All right. And candidate Jones.
Well, obviously, anybody who's been on Nextdoor app or Newsbreak or any of these apps, they've been seeing what you would, may think is a rise in crime that's been going on lately. So one of the first questions is, how can we tackle that, obviously? But on the flip side, we are, we're going to be going under some significant cuts. So while I don't necessarily agree that we should be cutting some of the funds with the police department, I think that we need to really take a look at what we're spending the money on. Like my opponent said, with the non-emergency contact and being able to get the police there in time, we obviously have to look at that. But right now, like I said, as far as we're increasing funds, I don't necessarily know, but we do have a rising crime problem that we have to address and I think that can be done by having-- we have to address, and I think that can be done by having, maybe restructuring some of the things that the officers are doing, maybe having some more beat cops, like residents in East Village have asked for, having cops who are on the streets and engaging with individuals who are out there acting up would be a good start.
All right, and candidate Kalen?
Public safety is of paramount importance for our city government to deliver. I will agree with Mr. Whitburn that we have to spend what it takes to recruit and retain capable police officers, and police officers should not be doing non-police work. That's a waste of resources. But I think there's a bigger question here, and it has to do with police community relations. San Diego was once the national model for community policing. That's no longer true, and I am hoping that the new police chief will embrace that in a whole new way. I have been friends with police families. I have been friends with African-Americans who were pulled over way too many times, and I've seen what happens when the community and the police sit down. I was in the National Conflict Resolution Center before I retired. I've seen talking circles where the two sides that are supposed to be at war found that they had lots in common, and made friends, and started working together. So that's what we have to do when it comes to policing.
All right, thank you. Our next question for our candidates from the audience, and it will go to candidate Kalen, you'll be the first. What is your position on Measure A, and it'd be the supplemental health funding?
I am against it. The San Diego Taxpayers Association just put out a very persuasive argument that it should not be passed. It is unfortunate that we keep using ballot measures to do the work of government, and it's time for us to start looking very closely at how money is spent. The situation with homelessness, it's, a lot of it is mental health. It could be treated. It could be, it could be solved. But we're not doing that. I see in Balboa Park, when I run in the early mornings, these people are desperately ill. And we can get them help, but at this point, we're just sort of looking away. We move them around from place to place. That's not working, and we have to do something that does work.
All right, candidate Cusack?
So the, we need, we need beds. I've been an attorney for 30 years, and we've never needed beds for mental health treatment more than we do right now. What we don't need is the government forcing people into those beds. There's a really, really long line of people that want those beds voluntarily. We don't need to be forcing people in. And so there definitely needs to be funding sources for those beds. There are entire groups of people for whom there are no beds right now, persons who need recuperative help and don't have houses. They have no beds. Our senior population only has 60 beds, and there's 1,500 of them. We have no beds for the disabled population. We need, and these, these aren't people that need mental health beds, these are just people need beds. The people that we see with mental health and, and problems, they're just the outside of the goldfish bowl. There's so many other people behind them, and we need, all of them need beds. Thank you.
All right, and candidate Whitburn, your position on Measure A?
So, what Measure A would do would be to take a previous state law that applied to a broad spectrum of people experiencing mental health crises and behavioral health challenges, and make it easier to use those resources for people experiencing homelessness, which is very difficult to do today. I strongly support that, because my number one priority on the city council has been addressing the homelessness crisis. There are a great number of people experiencing homelessness who do not have behavioral health needs, but there are many who do. There are many who absolutely require the resources necessary to get them into treatment for addictions, get them into treatment for mental health needs. And some of them are in such dire straits that they don't even know that they need the mental health care that is available to them. And we have relatives who call the city and beg us to do something for their loved one who is in a deep crisis with mental health. This would make it easier for us to help those folks, and I strongly support that.
All right, and candidate Jones?
I guess just to give a little, a little, I would say to give you, I'd tell a story, I guess. A couple days ago, I was at Starbucks, and there was a guy acting crazy, right? And I'd known him, I've been living down here for years. And he was yelling a little bit more than usual, so I stopped and talked to him, asked him if he wanted to do an interview, and kind of just talk about how it is living on the street. Was unable to really talk to this guy, he was really in over his head with whatever he was going through. It could have been drugs, it could have been mental ill, I think it was a mixture of both, but I'm not a psychologist or anything like that. With that said, the day after I was going to move my car, and that same gentleman had gotten arrested for assault. And the reason I bring that up is I think that if we had city, city council members and representatives who were actually, had an ear to the ground and knew what was going on in the street, we could save a lot of money in figuring out what to do with some of these individuals who do need help and who are being left behind. And so I'm in the middle of this measure, but I do understand that we have to find some way to compel people into some of the programs and services that we're offering. They can't slap our hand away.
All right, our next question. And the question will go to candidate Jones first. So what are your ideas for balancing growth with the preservation of our history? And especially, specifically historical designation in the homes in the area?
Yes, and in our district, we have quite a few of those designations, obviously. And I know there's some people who kind of want to protect the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Obviously, like, one thing that's been very central in my campaign is community involvement and being, and being able to get the word out to the community before they start building. I think a lot of the problems that we have with the city and pushing developments on people in the community is there's been a lack of communication. So possibly, if we were able to clear up some of this lack of communication, we wouldn't have to resort to trying to become historical districts. So again, a lot of the things the city has been doing, and a lot of the reaction from the residents, sometimes opposing some buildings that they may want, but there's little things they don't like, I think that can be solved with actually engaging with the community and not the special interests who are coming to them saying, hey, I got a, I got a good idea for apartment to build right here in Spruce. Can you sell it? No. They need to be coming to the residents first and asking them exactly what they want to build, and how they can build, and how it could look. So, but yes, historical districts, some of them do need to be preserved.
All right, candidate Kalen?
I was at the hearing of the Historical Resources Board when the Little Red Bungalow was on the agenda. It was awful. The members of the Historic Resources Board are all appointed by the mayor, and I sat there and watched as they moved the agenda item around, and then they finally got to us. And at one point, the attorney for the developer, the Los Angeles developer, was sitting in the front row. One of the board members was about to say, yeah, let's save it, and he went, no, 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 no. And the board member said, oh, no, we're not going to save it. You know, this is so wrong. Our historic sites, our historic structures in District Three, they are our treasures, and we have more of them than other districts do. And when I heard that the city council was considering vetoing Historic Resource Board decisions, I thought, you know, we are lost. Let's protect our treasures, they don't have to be mowed down, and a 17-story thing put on top of it.
All right, candidate Cusack?
I love history. I wish that people followed it more, because I see it repeating itself over and over. But I also believe that our treasures of San Diego are our people, and we need to better serve our people. And so there needs to be a better balancing when we're having a shelter crisis, a housing crisis, a homelessness crisis, that we prioritize use over non-use. There's some, there's some ways that we can make changes. There's a automatic rule that kicks in when a, when a home becomes 45 years, whether or not the owners are seeking that approval. And that causes a lot of houses to be reviewed, and takes up a lot of city time, maybe unnecessarily. So there's, there's some ways that we could trim. And like with anything, there needs to be a balancing between what people need, and we can maintain history, preserve history in a variety of ways. We can, we can build that into new architecture. We can have community centers that give tribute to, to that history in our gathering places. So, thank you.
All right, then candidate Whitburn?
These things are not mutually exclusive. We can have both, and we should have both. If we're going to address the homelessness crisis, if we're going to keep seniors on fixed incomes from falling into homelessness because of high rents, then we're going to have to continue to add housing. At the same time, we absolutely should historically designate genuinely historic properties. Bankers Hill is chock full of wonderful homes that have been here for generations and are and should be designated. But I do take exception to folks who want to designate everything that's 45 years or older. I am over 45. I don't feel historic. And, you know, I don't think everything that is over 45 is historic. But I have voted in favor of a number of historic designations for properties that genuinely contribute to the character of our communities, and I will continue to do so.
All right, our next question is related to climate change, and we're going to start with candidate Whitburn. The question is, what are your specific ideas to address the fossil fuel contributions by the city and its contracted companies?
Could you repeat the question, please?
I will, I will. Okay. So, what are your specific ideas to address the fossil fuel contributions, greenhouse gas emissions, by the city of San Diego and its contracted companies? Excuse me? Oh, in a minute, yeah.
Well, let me just answer it this way, and say that I think one of the most important things that we can do to reduce fossil fuel emissions is to make it more attractive for people to take public transit rather than drive. We are never going to force people out of their cars and onto public transit. But as the elected chair of MTS, the buses and trolley system, I have been working to make transit more convenient for people. We have worked to make the trolley and bus service more frequent. We have extended the hours of the service. We have extended the Youth Opportunity Pass, which is free transit for young people 18 years and under. We've increased security. We were told that that was something that people find important on transit. We've increased cleanliness. If we can make transit something that people genuinely want to take as an alternative to cars, then we have a real chance of reducing greenhouse gas emissions in San Diego.
All right, candidate Jones?
A show of hands, did anybody here take the transit here today? So, okay, and that's awesome. I would like to take the transit as well, but it's just inconvenient for me, just to be honest. My opponent has been the chair of the MTS this entire time, and it hasn't gotten any better. People are getting assaulted, women are being harassed on the bus, and it just hasn't gotten any better, you know. It's actually gotten significantly worse since, and I was, I didn't say this earlier, but I was born and raised here. I was born at Balboa Hospital in the district, and it's gotten significantly worse. So I think before we can actually demand that the residents take the trolley, like we have in the TPAs in that situation, with the transit priority areas where you have a mile to, if it's, you know, you guys know what I'm talking about, right? But we would have to, before we can force residents to do that, we need to improve the transit. Now, as far as the city, the city needs to practice what is preached, and I'm all for the city having to do some of the things that it's trying to force on its residents, so.
All right, and now we have candidate Kalen?
I will not be combing through the city budget looking for fossil fuel investments, because I will be combing through the city budget looking for expenditures that do not produce return on investment. Those last-minute, just under a million-dollar budget items that get slipped in for special interest, that don't benefit most of us. Speaking of return on investment, bike lanes were sold to us as a climate action measure. They were supposed to move large numbers of commuters from cars to bikes. That hasn't happened. Millions of dollars for bike lanes, and what was the result of it? I don't think any climate action measure happened. As for transit, when I'm elected to the city council, I will be the only council member who takes the bus to work, the number-two bus from North Park to downtown and back. I took it when I was working at the Conflict Resolution Center for years. I will call upon my colleagues on the city council, I will call upon the mayor and our staffs. Let's walk our talk. Let's take public transit ourselves and then ask the public to do it.
All right, candidate Cusack?
Can you ask the question again?
Yes, I'm happy to do that. Regarding climate, what are your specific ideas to address the fossil fuel contributions or greenhouse gas emissions by the city of San Diego and its contracted companies?
So the city has a climate action plan. That plan's already in place, and a lot of experts have come together to agree that that's the way we should be moving the city. But then it comes down to budget prioritization, and where are we spending our money, and where is it going? And right now, purified water is getting 95% of our climate action money. And while that might be laudable, it's not reducing greenhouse gas emissions at all. And the greenhouse gas emissions are the largest part of the problem. So, there's, yes, transit definitely plays a role, but it's not the only role, and we need to allocate money in the right places, so it is reducing greenhouse gas. We need to reduce lanes, not expand lanes. We need to move the city to our goals to be walkable. We are not, the bike lanes that are out were very haphazardly planned, nothing's connected. It's not safe enough yet for that, but we need to get to that point. Thank you.
All right, the next question, I'm going to start with you, candidate Cusack. What are your plans to fix our D3 streets? And this is a quote, "They are not sexy."
No, they're not. So, infrastructure is much like a Ponzi scheme. You know, the new development comes in, the funds from that new development help to provide the funds for the surrounding infrastructure needs, or at least that's how it's supposed to work. We had a large kitty, a large piggy bank of funds for, for, for that event, that was the, the Ash Street. Kind of scooped that away. We need to look into vacancy taxes that will help support our infrastructure. Tourism needs to contribute to that. Again, our, like I said, the public safety budget can support funds in that regard.
All right, and now we have candidate Whitburn?
We've paved a good number of streets in Bankers Hill, but we've got more to do. The paving we have done has gotten me in a little trouble. A friend I know in Bankers Hill is irritated that we've paved everybody else's street but his, so we got to get to all of the streets. Last year, we did a streets condition survey, citywide, checking the conditions of all the streets with laser equipment, very reliable, and that has resulted in a streets condition index. And based on that index, the city is going to prioritize streets based on the condition that they're in, along with some equity considerations to make sure that neighborhoods that have historically been underfunded receive their fair share. Under the formula that has been produced, District Three, our district, in the next 10 years, will see the greatest improvement in overall street conditions. And I am really pleased about that. That is something that we have really fought for to make. That is something that we have really fought for to make sure the District Three gets its fair share of funding. But more than anywhere else in the city, you will see an improvement in streets in District Three.
All right, candidate Jones.
Yes, and I'm an inspector. I've inspected potholes, commercial real estates, homes. I don't think we need to do a laser study to see potholes in the streets. That's one of the biggest problems we have, is we're spending a lot of money for consultants because frankly, some of the city council members don't know what they're looking at. So, I was out there today, I was out there looking at some potholes in Bankers Hill, right over there on Hamilton, sorry, not Hamilton, on Hawthorne, going down, it's crazy. Hawthorne, I believe, and, well, the whole Hawthorne, actually, going down towards the airport is crazy. She had mentioned sexy, the streets aren't sexy. That is reference to Todd Gloria's new campaign for sexy streets, and you have to understand the elephant in the room. Todd Gloria is a very formidable person, that you have to vote for a candidate who will be able to stand up to Todd Gloria and his charisma. Also, the next thing is, as far as with the street process, one of my good friends works with the city council, we have to stop doing these quick fixes, these patches, we've got to do more curb-to-curb. And then also, in the RFP process, we have to prevent lowballing, which is basically, you know, look up lowballing, that's what we have to prevent, I don't have the time, but look it up.
All right, candidate Kalen.
Thank you, Ellis. You couldn't be more right. My husband had a saying, "When you buy cheap, it's expensive, and when you buy expensive, it's cheap." We've been fixing our streets on the cheap with slurry seal, and a year later, it wears off, and then we have to fix the streets again. That's just dumb. Everything we do in the city is done on the cheap. As for the study that was mentioned, I believe we paid that consultant $700,000. The money we pay to consultants gives me a headache. Why isn't that money going to the street repair? That doesn't make any sense at all. Consultants are draining the treasury of money, and that has to stop. It's time for the city to make smart decisions about return on investment, and street repair is one of the places where that has to start.
All right, thank you. The next question, I think I'm going to get this right. The city has many problems currently not addressed effectively. Oh, and this question is first going to go to candidate Kalen. Kalen, am I, Kalen, sorry. Yeah, thank you. So, the city has many problems currently not addressed effectively. Do you think a city manager's system would be better than a strong mayor government? Would it be more effective?
Hell, yes. The strong mayor's system proves the wisdom of the adage that absolute power corrupts absolutely. The city council are afraid of the mayor because if they want to climb the political career ladder, and I think most of them do, he can stop them. When you get elected into public office, you have two ways you can go. You can serve your constituents, put their needs first, get back to them when they have questions or problems, or you can serve the mayor and his special friends who have a lot of money, and they'll help you climb the ladder. It's one or the other, it's a binary choice. My choice will be very clear. My constituents will come first. They will be taken care of, they will be listened to, they will be heated.
All right, candidate Kuzak?
Again, the question.
Yes, it's regarding, the city has many problems currently not addressed effectively. So this has to do with sort of the governance at City Hall. Do you think a city manager's strong versus a strong mayoral structure to government would be more effective?
I'm struggling to remember the question. I do remember when we had a city manager's system, and we, under Sanders, we shifted to the strong mayor's system. And I believe Todd Gloria has shown us the faultiness of a strong mayor's system, because when you rely on a strong mayor's system, you're really relying on the character of that mayor. And when you have a good mayor, someone who's decent, who over-vetoes council, giving themselves and the mayor raises, that happened twice under Sanders' term, that's what, but when you have a mayor who slides money to city donors, as he did in Ash Street, and then you have a council that six of them would have to stand up to a very vindictive mayor, you realize the weaknesses in a strong mayor's system. So, we need better elected officials is what we need.
All right, candidate Whitburn.
Well, there was a reference to corruption. I would say that Enron by the Sea, which was a famous instance of corruption in San Diego, that happened under a city manager form of government. It's really not about the form of government, it's about the people who are in the influential positions. There are successful city governments with strong mayors, there are successful city governments with city managers. It's about the competence of the people in those roles, the people in those positions. And you can have a very effective government either way. I think in the case of San Diego right now, what we need is, we have, and it was the city voters approved, a strong mayor form of government, but I think that we also need to have a strong city council. And by having a strong city council with a strong mayor, you've got a good balance that can make decisions and ensure that the city's interests are covered.
All right, candidate Jones.
Yes, I understand, I guess I'll, I should say this, I believe when there was some of the corruption going on, it was some of the members of the Republican Party in San Diego. And I think right now, we are in a position of proving ourselves back to the community of San Diego, which needs to be done. Right now, with the strong mayor's system, obviously, there are some people who are not too happy with what Todd has going on, but that's what we're stuck with right now. And so, we can talk about hypotheticals, or we could talk about how we can navigate in this system right now. And there's a phrase in the black community, the Black Panthers, they say, "All power to the people," right? And the reason they say that is because the people have the power, meaning that we're nothing without you. And I think right now, in this form of government with the strong mayor's system, the candidate is pretty much stripped to his voice and a few votes. And if you have a candidate who's going to do everything that Todd Gloria says, or whoever the mayor says, then it's not going to work. So, that's what I can bring to you, is a way to navigate in this system by being a strong voice for whatever you guys want.
All right, the next question, and we will start with candidate Jones. And the question is, do you support disbanding the Uptown planners and appointing Vibrant, I think it's called the Vibrant Uptown? And if so, please explain your reasoning.
I think Vibrant Uptown is a new planning group, that's competing.
They would be appointed.
They would be appointed.
Instead of elected by the people.
Yeah, so I haven't been to those meetings yet, but I have been to the Uptown Community Planners Group. And I will say this, I understand the city is trying to be a little bit more inclusive and get more people of diversity onto these planning groups, but you can't force it. And I think that a lot of people look down upon that. I see what the city is trying to do, but they're doing that because, again, they're not reaching out to the community, they're not making an effort to get out there and get some people to these groups. And they're not even making an effort to try to alleviate some of the problems that people can't get to these groups, like parking, or having to work nine to five in the groups at a certain time. So we have to look at the things that are causing the overall problem, like the root cause of these particular problems, before we just try to force new laws and legislate, new laws and regulations onto groups that have been in existence for years. There's a better way of doing it, and it's not by forcing it, so.
All right, candidate Kalen.
I talked earlier about replacing democracy with autocracy. I can't think of a better example than overturning the elections of the community planning groups and removing elected members to replace them with handpicked members. And they will be handpicked by the mayor, let's not have any illusions about that. I am on a planning group, I know the work that goes into it, Vibrant Uptown does not. They don't know what they're in for. I wrote a letter two years ago to Mr. Whitburn and to Mr. Lakava. I said, "I've worked at universities that identified best practices for diversity, recruitment, and retention, and they work, but we can't do that ourselves, we're volunteers. There's a chief DEI officer now, can you ask her to help us?" I never heard back. You cannot create lasting diversity by overturning elections. It won't work. You have to do what people at universities do, recruiting faculty, students, and staff. It's person-to-person outreach. You go to the places where underrepresented people are, you talk to them, you get to know them, you invite them to where you are. It's work, and it doesn't happen fast, but it's the only way. You can't do it on the cheap, you can't do it quick.
All right, candidate Kuzak.
Okay, so, back in 2000, you may recall, the red light camera photo enforcement program. I challenged that system and got it set aside, and I went to city council when they were considering turning it back on, and I said, "I'm going to fight you again if you don't fix X, Y, and Z." And this was my first time before city council. And the council then were taking notes, as I was telling them. I ran out of time, and the mayor, Judge Murphy, gave me more time. Notes afterwards, they called me up and they asked me for more information, and then they fixed X, Y, and half a Z, and that was my wish list. And that's not the climate right now. We've got an administration that just thinks it knows everything, and it doesn't need to hear from anyone. And this just doesn't look good. This really looks like they don't like criticism, and they're going to swap out people with people who are more supportive. So I think there's ways of ensuring diversity, such as having assigned seats for different individuals, you can get them there, but if you're going to have a seat for renter and low income, you're going to have to compensate that seat to get them there, because they're going to need to work three jobs just to pay their rent. Thank you.
All right, candidate Whitburn.
I had the real pleasure of serving on a community planning group for a number of years, and I really value the advisory input that they provide to the city council on various neighborhood issues, including development. And one of the things I always look at as a council member is, what was the take of the community planning group on that? Now, I think it's really important that the community planning groups be as representative of the community as possible. And some of our community planning groups have not been particularly representative of the communities in which they are. That prompted council member Lakava to bring forward some changes that passed the city council. Now you've got a couple of groups who both want to represent Uptown as a community planning group. That will come to council probably sometime in the spring, but it's less about the people at this point than it is about the proposed structures. Once one of those structures is put in place, there's going to be an election either way to fill the seats. So, I have not looked at the applications yet, I will, we'll pass something at council, we'll have a structure, and then we'll have people run for those seats.
All right, thank you. Our next question, and it will go to candidate Whitburn first. And the question, and as a reminder to the audience, there is no applause, booing, cheering at any time until after the forum. So the question is, a number of large cities have passed resolutions calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. Would you support such a resolution?
Well, my heart breaks at the violence that has been unleashed on Israel on October 7th and in Gaza over the past several months. I think there needs to be an immediate, negotiated, permanent, bilateral ceasefire. And I think that that has to include the release of all hostages, and it has to include humanitarian aid to Gaza.
All right, candidate Jones.
I'm glad you guys asked this question, and I'm going to be frank, the people that you guys have the signs out here, and you're saying, "Will you call for a ceasefire?", you have to get involved with the members of the community. So it would probably make sense to turn those signs to the people that are sitting in the audience, because ultimately, we speak for the community. So it's not necessarily what I think personally, it's what the community thinks, especially if I'm going to be giving that vote over to something. Now, personally, I would love to see a ceasefire. I've been a lot, I've been busy working on what's going on here in San Diego. We've got a lot of problems. We've got a lot of brothers on the streets, we've got a lot of sisters on the streets here that we need to deal with. And I'm just going to be honest, we have people who've been living here for years that we have to deal with, we have to take care of them, people who look like me and you. But before we can have any type of resolution, you have to make sure that your community is involved. So I would suggest going out to District Three like we all have been, and speaking, knocking on doors, and asking people how they feel about this, because it needs to be had, this question needs to be had. But personally, I'm for it, but you have to get the community involved before I give that vote over to them.
All right, candidate Kalen.
I will be entirely focused on the needs of the people who live and work in District Three. I will not be distracted by that. Every time I've seen the city council spend weeks and weeks on this resolution and that resolution, these are worthy resolutions, but the job of the city council members are to serve their constituents, solve problems, make government work better. And we don't, we don't have the time to spend on anything else. And so, I would not support any resolution that doesn't serve my constituents in District Three better, and that's just how I feel.
All right, and candidate Kuzak?
So, the city passes all kinds of silly resolutions on, you know, let's honor this restaurant here or this person here. It certainly has time to pass, some time and conversation on this very troubling, what's going on right now? I see the Palestinians, and before them, Israelites, as the world's homeless. And we need to help people, not just people that look like us, but all kinds of people. So, yes, we need a ceasefire. I invited the United Nations Special Rapporteur on Adequate Housing here, and I got to drive him around, and he was talking about the crime of homicide, which is the intentional destruction of homes. Homes are stability, homes are healthcare, homes are peace. And so, I'm very troubled by the intentional destruction of homes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next question, then, we're going to kind of bring it back here to District Three. Given the budget shortfalls in the city, how are we going to repair and maintain our beautiful Balboa Park? And we will start with candidate Kuzak.
So, a lot of planning had to go into the fact that we even have a Balboa Park. And so, that brings home the need for community planning groups. Certainly, we've had different proposals, again, where the funding comes can come from a variety of sources. But I think it is important that we do have open space, Balboa Park. I think it is important that that, that's a very prompt, it's larger than Central Park, it's larger than San Francisco. And so, I think there's a lot of pride in that. I would like to consider doing a reunion of the 1935 World's Fair in 2035 and move us towards that, and that might be a way that we could raise funds for beautification, because that's how Balboa Park came to be years back.
All right, candidate Whitburn.
Well, so many of us have considered Balboa Park to be a crown jewel of San Diego. We take pride in it. People come from around the world to visit it, yet unfortunately, we have not kept up with the maintenance and other things that have to be done to keep it in prime shape. I have been a strong supporter of using a penny of the transient occupancy tax, the hotel tax, a penny for the arts, and we have increasingly made San Diego a, on the national map, in arts. And I would like to see us do the same thing for Balboa Park when we can. I think that a penny for Balboa Park would serve to help fund many of the needs that we have and continue to attract people to a park that makes us all proud. Now, there are other ways to go as well. If the voters were to approve a penny increase in the sales tax, that would create all kinds of fun. that would create all kinds of funding for many things, including the park, infrastructure tax, same thing. But I think a penny for Balboa Park would be a good way to approach it.
All right, and as a reminder, I forgot to mention, this is going to be our last question for this evening. I know, I know, the time, we're running out of time. So again, candidate Jones?
Again, he's like, "A penny for this, a penny for that," like, what happened to the last penny we had, we gave you? Right? So, and I was born in Balboa Park, or born in Balboa Hospital, but that area, I don't even think they have kids that's born there. I don't think the city trusts what, I don't think residents trust what the city is doing with its money. So, and again, that goes back to having somebody who's, you know, I don't come from much, I don't come from privilege or anything like that. So when I had to borrow some money, like from my father or something, we didn't have it like that. And if I messed the money off, right, or some people say they tricked the money off, if I messed the money off, then they're going to be like, "Well, what'd you do with the last, with the last couple dollars I gave you?" And that's what we need to ask the city, "What did you do with the last penny that we gave you?" And they can't really tell you. They're spending, what, $700,000 to do a laser and see where the pothole is? They spent $450 million to paint on the street and make a bike lane? So we're getting, we're getting played out of our money, and we don't need to give them any more money until we get people we can trust that can handle it.
All right, so now we have, yeah, candidate Kalen?
Does anybody remember the Balboa Park Centennial Celebration? Remember that? Millions and millions and nothing to show for it. We didn't even get the Costco sheet cake that Todd Gloria talked about. That failure exactly captures why Balboa Park has been so mistreated. Generation after generation of elected officials profess their love for the park, but they don't want to pay for it. We now are, but we do want to pay for consultants to study the park. It's always easier to study things than it is to fix them. We now are paying $1 million to a consultant from New York to study the park. Since I have been in San Diego 35 years, there has been study after study. I'm trying to get a list, and it's hard, because there've been so many that I, I can't like pull the information together. But I am going to get that list, and I am going to use it when I campaign. Stop studying Balboa Park and start paying to make it what it should be, the crown jewel. And, and really, if you keep talking about loving it and, and you don't pay, then just shut up.
All right, before your candidates give their closing remarks, I want to thank you for being such an attentive audience and providing so many good questions. We really appreciate it, we couldn't have this forum, obviously, without you and your questions. And a little plug, the League of Women Voters has a website for Vote411 that provides some really excellent election information on both local, state, and federal elections, nonpartisan information, impartial. And so if you're interested, please go to vote411.org. And now, oh wait, we're not, but thank you for the applause, but we're not quite there yet. Because now we want to go for the closing remarks. And each candidate will have two minutes, and we're going to go in the reverse order. And let me find my sheet. So we will start with candidate Jones, two minutes for closing remarks.
Okay, so once again, my name is Ellis California Jones, you can look me up on Google. We have a website, jones3fordistrict3.com. I did the website myself, didn't pay a lot of money for somebody to do it. They tried to charge me a lot of money, and I said, "You know what, I could do this myself." And so saved the campaign some money. Please understand that fiscal responsibility starts at the campaign level. So if you have a guy that's out there raising a bunch of money, you know, to buy billboards and things like that, and not necessarily getting to the voter, if they have a lot of money in between them and the voter, it's going to be the same thing when they get into office, or get reelected into office. They're going to put a lot of money between you and, you know, and them. So be on the watch for that. Another thing, the elephant in the room is Todd Gloria. There's a lot of people in here who, and in the city, who don't like Todd Gloria, right? But there's a lot of people in the city who do like Todd Gloria, and that's the thing. So, but my question is that, the people who do like Todd Gloria, do you like them enough to vote for them twice? And that's the question. When you vote for one of the candidates here, you want to see who will be able to stand up to this person, and what I, to Todd, the mayor, and what I would like to offer is leverage. That's one thing, I want to work for you, and that's what I do. We have people in the audience who I've argued with on Nextdoor and Twitter. But my main thing is, where can we get to a point where we can have some type of understanding? It's not about the party, or whatever they're trying to do, or any special, I don't have any special interest supporting me. The only power that I have, the reason that I'm up here right now, is from individuals just knocking on doors, and that's it. And so I don't have anybody that's backing me but you, so I don't have nobody that I owe favors to. And we have to get out there, we have to have a staff who can reach the community, who can respond whether you like them or not. One thing I do is I'm a fighter. I fought the system before, you could look into my background, and I'll fight for you.
All right, candidate Whitburn?
Well, I want to thank the Bankers Hill Community Group and the League of Women Voters, and all of you, again, for being here this evening. Really appreciate the relationship that the community group and my office have, and the progress that we've made together. My friends up here at the table have spent the last hour and a half telling you what they wouldn't do. I've been telling you what we've gotten done, and what we're going to continue to do. You need a council member who's going to work for you, who's going to get things done, who's going to take on the difficult issues, like I have taken on with our homelessness crisis. We reached a level of unsheltered homelessness in our city that was completely untenable. It impacted Bankers Hill and all the surrounding communities. I brought forward two initiatives. One, prohibited encampments on public property when there is a shelter bed or safe sleeping site available. And in conjunction with that, we opened up our city's first safe sleeping sites. And we have two of them open now. We have seen more than 500 people who were living in encampments on the streets move from those unhealthy, unsafe conditions over to our safe sleeping sites, where they're getting security, restrooms, meals, connections to services. I spoke to a woman named Deborah, it looks like Deborah, but she pronounces it Deborah. She had been on the streets for six years. She went to the safe sleeping site, she was there for two weeks, and her caseworker got her connected to senior living. And the day that I was talking with her, she was moving into permitted housing. That is exactly what we need to be doing if we're going to solve these crises. We've gotten a lot done in the last few years, but we've got much more to do. I have worked together with people of different opinions to find solutions on San Diego's most difficult problems. With your support, I look forward to continuing to move our city in the right direction and continue to make progress, and it's been a pleasure tonight. Thank you very much.
All right, candidate Cusack?
That's why I'm running for office. It is not safe what we are doing to vulnerable individuals right now. And that's why I invited the United Nations Special Rapporteur on Adequate Housing out here to inspect conditions. And my council member had the opportunity to meet with the UN Special Rapporteur and declined it. And he had the opportunity to set a Zoom meeting up since, and hasn't. And he was called out on the human rights violations, and instead of inquiring as to what those might be so he could rectify them, no, he's like, "Oh, well, of course, housing would be best, but this is, this is good enough." No, that wasn't his point. Even for shelters, there are standards. And even for tent encampments, which are shelters, there are standards. And he's not meeting those standards. He gave them ice fishing tents that don't have any bottom and have a hole at the top. So that doesn't work out very well for rain, and they're not insulated.
Excuse me, candidate Cusack, could you please let us know what your position would be? I'd appreciate that.
My position would be, we're going to move it to a human rights-based standard, and we're going to treat people, meet people where they're at, and apply a human rights-based approach. Housing first, protect people. We're not just move people from tents to one district neighborhood to another district neighborhood and call that a success. So I am solution-oriented, that's why I'm running. I fixed the red light camera stuff, and I went back to being a resident. Now I want to get in there and fix the homelessness problem. I've been boots on the ground on the street. I know what needs to be done, and I've been challenging the city now for years. I am not shy. Thank you.
All right, and then lastly, candidate Kalen?
I'm going to close by answering the second question that candidates are always asked, and that is, "What will you do if you're elected?" The most formative experience of my career as a writer was working as a journalist. Journalists are advocates for truth, and they are advocates for the public interest. They dig up facts, they put them on the table, they ask people in power very tough questions, and they do not accept robe-a-dope, word-salad answers. I am asking the people of District 3, "Please elect me to this council seat, send me to City Hall, and let me go to work." I will hire a budget analyst with forensic accounting skills. We will comb through the budget to find all these just under a million dollar expenditures that go for who knows what, the revenues that are not collected. We will meet with city employees to find out what's really going on. I've talked to former city employees, they are terribly demoralized. Their jobs have been completely politicized, and that has to stop. I also will use my journalist skills and my journalist sensibility to solve a mystery that needs to be solved, and that's 101 Ash Street. 101 Ash is like the creature in the horror movie that keeps popping up out of the ground. Just recently, we learned that money was taken from the infrastructure budget, which included flood control, and slipped into the 101 Ash Street settlement. I, I guess the city council and the mayor felt, "Well, you know, it never rains in Calif, in, in San Diego, so we don't have to worry about this." They're like children with play money. Take it out of this pot, put it into that pot. We need to know what happened with 101 Ash, and until we know that, the people of San Diego will never trust City Hall. It's time for answers, it's time for truth, it's time to put the public interest ahead of special interest. Please send me to City Hall and let me go to work on that, thank you.
All right, so on behalf of the Bankers Hill Community Group and the League of Women Voters of San Diego, I want to thank the candidates for running for office and attending our forum tonight, and please, applause. Yeah. And thank you again. You are here tonight because you are following our motto, "Don't just be a voter, be an informed voter." So thank you again for coming.